Procurement, supply of unbound pavement material for maintenance of council's unsealed roads. There's a report concerning the supply of that material for council's unsealed roads. Resolution is sought to enter into a contractual agreement for the provision of that material. Does any member of committee wish to ask any question? Yes, Mayor Harding?
Chair, I would like to ask, but it's something about the evaluation report, so it is commercial in confidence. May I ask that we go into closed session so I may ask a question about a matter that was raised in the in the strategy and tender evaluation plan?
Sure. So, Mayor, would you like to move?
If I could move that?
Yeah, so you'd move that in accordance with section 254j3?
Thank you, I didn't have it in front of me, thank you.
Yeah. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Johnny.
Thank you.
Those in favour? Unanimous, carried. So we'll move into closed session, thank you. Back on? Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Are there any further questions in open session that members of committee wish to ask?
No.
No? Then the recommendation is that a) that pursuant to section 235b of the local government regulation 2012, council resolve that the exception applies because of the specialised nature of the services that are sought and would be impractical and disadvantageous to invite quotes for the provision of unbound pavement material for maintenance of council's unsealed roads, and b) that council enter into a contractual arrangement with CW and EJ Russell for three years for a value up to $1 million GST exclusive. I'll open, beg my pardon, I'll call for a mover. Thank you councillor Doyle. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll open the matter for discussion. No, there being no discussion, I'll put the motion, those in favour? It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item three is procurement, Kio Cloud annual subscription. There's a report seeking a council resolution to continue the engagement of Accrion Proprietary Limited. Does any member of committee wish to? Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
May I speak to a relevant council officer, Chair?
Yes, so procurement?
Someone who knows the Kio Cloud software and the Kio Way software.
So would you like to speak to someone from procurement or from?
We can start there?
Okay.
If they understand the functionality?
Functionality. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, good morning councillors. Samantha Chandler, manager of libraries and customer service. I'm not the digital expert, but I'll do my best.
Thank you. Through the chair, I guess my question is, we're moving from, was it Kio Way to Kio Cloud? Is that the upgrade that is for us?
Let's see what the actual wording of it is. Yeah, so what we've actually done is we had the software in place, but it was individual on each kiosk or computer. So we've actually moved to a new version which gives us access across all. So instead of having to go to an individual kiosk and make a change, now we can change all of them remotely.
Okay. That was my next question. Can you use it remotely just in today's day and age with the pandemic? If you could do that?
Yes, we can, and we couldn't do that before. So if we wanted to change something or fix something, we had to send somebody out to each location to make that change. Now we can do it remotely.
And I can see that you can obviously look at usage stats. Has that feature improved or is it still the same as before?
It doesn't change it from a customer perspective. So it doesn't change anything for the customer. The benefit was more so from our perspective.
From our perspective, do we have better understanding of usage statistics because of it? Or has that functionality stayed the same?
The functionality stayed the same. So, yeah, there's no difference. So from anything that the customer was doing was exactly the same.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I don't have any other questions.
Further questions? Any other member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, the recommendation is that a) in two parts, a) that pursuant to section 235b of the local government regulation 2012, council resolve that the exception applies because of the specialised nature of the services that are sought and would be impractical and disadvantageous to invite quotes or tenders for the provision of Kio Cloud annual subscription, support of the kiosk management software, and b) that council enter into a contractual arrangement, council file reference number 16407, with Accrion Proprietary Limited at an approximate purchase price of $45,000 excluding GST over the entire term, being a term of one year with option for extension at the discretion of council as purchaser of an additional one-year term. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Mayor Harding. A seconder? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion, those in favour? It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item four is renewal of lease over 205 Brisbane Street Ipswich from MIA Investments Proprietary Limited. This is a report concerning the renewal of a lease over 205 Brisbane Street Ipswich described as lot 10 on SP 292794 between Ipswich City Council and MIA Investments Proprietary Limited for car parking purposes. Any member of committee wish to? Yes, thank you, Mayor Harding. I'll call forward the appropriate council officer to answer questions.
Kerry Parrott, senior property officer.
Through the chair. Ms Parrott, how many parking spots are in that particular location?
There are approximately 21.
21. And do you know what revenue we receive from the parking meters there each year?
About $27,000 per year with $2,250 per month.
Okay. And that's the revenue that's brought in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chair.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Ms Parrott. Committee, the recommendation is in two parts. A) that council exercise its option to renew the leasehold interest in the land at 205 Brisbane Street Ipswich described as lot 10 on SP 292794 for car parking purposes, and b) that council enter a lease with MIA Investments Proprietary Limited at the lessor on the following terms: one, at an annual rent of $31,214.90 excluding GST payable by council from the commencement date of the lease on 1st of July 2022, and two, for a further term of five years with no options for extension. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Doyle. A seconder? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll open the matter for discussion. Mayor Harding?
If I might, Chair, I thought it was quite interesting reading this to see that Ipswich City Council provides more than 3,500 car parking spaces, spaces in the city centre, both on-street and off-street. And that's a very popular car park, I use it really myself. So it was just good to see that the council's continuing to support, you know, people who are coming into our CBD.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Parking is always an issue in any busy CBD. And whilst it's only 21 odd car spaces, it's critical that we stake our claim to as many as possible. Noting the report talks about private operated car parks, there are several throughout the city, and as our Ipswich Central and our CBD continues to grow, develop, thrive, to get it to where we want to be, I would suggest we're going to see a few more car parking facilities by private investment. So it takes a little bit of pressure off council.
Yes, there's definite opportunity there for private enterprise if they wish to proceed. I likewise also, if I'm in the CBD, particularly that middle area, for an extended period of time rather than using on-street, I'll park in there and it's very central and convenient.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, isn't it, when we think about the land holdings within our CBD, obviously those that are privately owned and owners of those properties start to think, you know, if the property is quite old and, you know, think about doing repairs to whack in some tenants versus demolitions, certainly not our heritage properties, but and turn them into car park space. So I know those discussions have already been happening from time to time. We get these owners coming to talk to our planners and our economic development guys about. So looking forward to becoming a big, busy, thriving CBD.
Definitely concur.
And if I may say, Chair, we know in the last 12 months, we've had 21 new businesses open up in our Ipswich Central area. So we know that more and more customers are coming through. So we do need to provide that.
To cater for that, yes, absolutely. Any other member of committee wish to discuss? No? Then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? That's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item five is acquisition of extinguished easement, easement B on RP 202017 over 15 Nelson Street Bundamba. There's a report concerning the acquisition of an easement for drainage purposes. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? Then the recommendation is in three parts. A) that council have considered having considered the details contained in this report, support the acquisition of an easement for drainage purposes of the area of land identified and attachment to, the land described as easement B on RP 202017 in lot 5 on SP 19844, located at 15 Nelson Street Bundamba by way of agreement with SEQ Water. B) in the first instance, the method of acquisition will be by agreement with SEQ Water pursuant to the Property Law Act 1974 and the Land Title Act 1994. And C) the council be kept informed as to the progress and outcome of easement B. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Mayor Harding. A seconder? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion, those in favour? It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item six is disposal of council freehold land access restriction strip located at lot 717 Hood Street Caralie. There's a report concerning the partial disposal of freehold land for road purposes located at that site. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? The recommendation is in three parts. A) that council declare part of the access restriction strip located at lot 717 Hood Street Caralie described as lot 717 on RP 123085, surplus to council requirements and available for disposal for road purposes. B) that council resolve pursuant to section 236 sub two of the local government regulation 2012 that the exemption referred to in section 236 sub one sub sub B sub 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 one of the regulation applies to the disposal of part of the access restriction strip located at lot 717 Hood Street Caralie, described as lot 717 on RP 123085 to the state of Queensland represented by the Department of Resources. And C) that council resolve under section 2571b of the Local Government Act 2009 to delegate the power to the chief executive officer to be authorised to negotiate and finalise the terms of the disposal of the access restriction strip described in recommendation B for road purposes. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Doyle. A seconder? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion, those in favour? It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item seven, disposal of council freehold land access restriction strip located at 6001 De Graaf Street and part of lot 105 Unnamed Road, Bellbird Park. This is a report concerning the disposal of freehold land for road purposes located at that site. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? The recommendation is in three parts. A) that council declare the access restriction strips located at 6001 De Graaf Street and lot 105 Unnamed Road, Bellbird Park, described as lot 119 on SP 284850 and lot 105 on SP 276503, surplus to council requirements and available for disposal for road purposes. B) that council resolve pursuant to section 236 sub two of the local government regulation 2012 that the exemption referred to in section 2361b1 of the regulation apply to the disposal of the access restriction strip located at 6001 De Graaf Street and lot 105 Unnamed Road, Bellbird Park, described as lot 119 on SP 284850 and lot 105 on SP 276503 to the state of Queensland represented by the Department of to the state of Queensland represented by the Department of Resources. And C, the council resolve under section two five seven one B of the Local Government Act two thousand nine to delegate the power to the chief executive officer to be authorised to negotiate and finalise the terms of disposal of the access restriction strip described in recommendation B for road purposes. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Doyle, the secondaire. Thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Kunsman? Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item eight, and I hope it's not another. Disposal of part of council freehold land located at seven double zero six Panorama Drive, Springfield. This is a report concerning the disposal of part of land for road purposes. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? The recommendation is in three parts. A, the council declare part of the freehold land located seven zero zero six Panorama Drive, Springfield, described as lot nine 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 eight on SP two three six nine four two, surplus to council requirements and available for disposal for road purposes. B, the council resolve pursuant to section two three six two of the local government regulation twenty twelve that the exemption referred to in section two three six one B one of the regulation applies to the disposal of part of the freehold land at seven double zero six Panorama Drive, Springfield, described as lot nine 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 eight on SP two three six nine four two to the state of Queensland represented by the Department of Resources. And C, the council resolve under section two five seven one B of the Local Government Act two thousand nine to delegate the power to the chief executive officer to be authorised to negotiate and finalise the terms of disposal of part of the freehold land described in recommendation B for road purposes. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Kunsman, the secondaire. Thank you councillor Doyle. Open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? It is unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item nine, disposal of council freehold land access restriction strip located at lot three Mount Crosby Road, Chua. This is a report concerning the disposal of freehold land for road purposes. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? No? The recommendation is in three parts. A, the council declare the access restriction strip located at lot three Mount Crosby Road, Chua, described as lot three on SP one one eight six seven one, surplus to council's requirement and available for disposal for road purposes. B, the council resolve pursuant to section two three six sub two of the local government regulation twenty twelve that the exemption referred to in section two three six one B one of the regulation apply to the disposal of the access restriction strip located at lot three Mount Crosby Road, Chua, described as lot three on SP one one eight six seven one to the state of Queensland represented by the Department of Resources. And C, the council resolve under section two five seven one B of the Local Government Act two thousand nine to de- delegate the power to the chief executive officer to be authorised to negotiate and finalise the terms of disposal of the access restriction strip described in recommendation A and B for road purpose. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Kunsman, the secondaire. Thank you councillor Doyle. Open the matter for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item ten. Queensland Audit Office twenty twenty two interim audit report. This is a report concerning the Queensland Audit Office QAO twenty twenty two interim audit for, report for the financial year ending thirty June twenty twenty two, detailing the results of QAO's interim work performed between seven March to six May twenty twenty two, including a review of relevant information systems controls. Does any member of committee wish to ask any questions? Thank you councillor Johnny.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Mayor, councillors. Jeff Keach, acting, uh, general manager, corporate services.
Thank you, Mr Keach. Go ahead, councillor Johnny.
Um, report in relation to the asset registers with the, um, fixed assets. Um, and the correlation to the physical asset register.
Yep.
Um, and I know that we have had workshops and, um, we've received, uh, some KPMG, uh, reporting back on the movements here going forward. And I'm just wondering, um, so that we a better place to see any changes moving forward with this register? If we should be getting some kind of regular report specifically, um, on the, you know, the asset register
Yep, sure.
programme and how it's like, um, improving over time?
Sure.
Just wondering if that's something you would agree with or how you?
Yep.
Yeah, how, how do you think we'd get a better oversight of that?
Yes, you've got, what you've identified there is one of the, um, matters which is ongoing.
Yeah.
Um, probably just to put it in a little bit of context, if you don't mind, just for the committee to, to what the matter's about. So, um, in context, within the accounting system, we have, uh, the fixed asset register, the FAR. Um, and then within the asset management team, within the, the spatial team, they run the physical asset register, which is a lot more detail. So they have it road by road and segment by segment, et cetera, from those. Um, what we do at the moment, we have processes in place at the moment which QAO audit, where as part of our revaluation exercises, where we are required under the standards to revalue our assets every year, we revalue off the physical asset register because it's a lot more granular. So they look at the road and the replacement cost of those roads. So obviously what comes into play there is because the, uh, financial statements are off the physical asset register and we value off that, we need to make sure they're aligned. The finance team have got processes in place at the moment which are reviewed by QAO, whereas part of that revaluation will reckon, will, will reconcile those registers. It's a process which ideally we shouldn't have to do. And over time, when we look to implement our I evolve system, and this is clearly linked to I evolve, um, where as we develop our asset management system and our more physical asset miss system, we'll make them sure that they integrate and inter align easier than what they do at the moment. So at the moment, we have workaround processes that the finance team working with the asset management team do those manual reconciliations, uh, which are reviewed by QAO as part of the reval. The, the main implication is, from a financial statement perspective, is in relation to making sure the revaluations are undertaken properly. And so there's a process that's in place for those at this stage. Certainly the ongoing asset management process and the I evolve project as key projects that I would, I'm sure will be of interest to, to yourselves in the committee and they will obviously resolve this issue over time. So I'm thinking whether there's an additional report that would come through. I, I'm, I'm, I'll be honest, I can't think of one initially off my head that I would, would look to bring forward, noting that QAO do the reconciliation. But I certainly think the tracking of the asset management project.
Yeah, I guess just more of a deeper dive into that, um, that I evolve piece moving forward so that we have, um, a peace of mind that, that's, that's tracking correctly.
Correct, yep.
Um, and, you know, our assets are, are getting reconciled properly and their conditions and all that over time, I guess, because it's one of the bigger pieces, um, that we've got to manage, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. The criticality of our registers and, and, um, the information that we came, that we contain in those from both an asset management perspective, which then aligns to the financials is absolutely critical. I will say to provide a level of comfort to this committee that the audit and risk management committee uh, are very much focused on this as well. And I'm sure councillor Doyle and councillor Kunsman and I have uh, expressed to that committee two times that, uh, that through the I evolve project, this is a key point for me. It's a process that, um, you know, at the moment, we will resolve through that. And whether we end up with one register or two registers, I can't tell you how that will be at the moment. That depends on the I evolve systems and the solutions that we put in place. Because sometimes you actually run one register that does both purposes. If not, you have a lot better integration.
Yeah, it is always, it's always one of those hiccup items with any set of financials, asset register. And I have, and I've appreciated the feedback that I've got from councillor Doyle and councillor Kunsman in relation to the um, audit and risk committee and, um, their approach to the I evolve. Um, I guess just to, um, isolate this issue for the broader council, um, moving forward is just something that I would particularly be interested in.
Sorry, if I can add then, um, thank you, Chair. Um, so just wondering how we can, um, because I think it's really important, um, oh, sorry, it's, it's a good opportunity um, for councillors, um, to get an extra level of comfort by tapping into the audit and risk committee work or review that, that we do. I don't want to create work for, because it's a very labour intensive process at the moment, um, the workaround. But just wondering, maybe we just go away and work that out ourselves. I, I had in mind, um, you know, recent commentary around, um, reporting and, and everyone being, um, uh, able to access the same amount of information.
Hmm.
Um, if a workshop, presentation, regular updates from the Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee CEO, would that be appropriate or not? Anyway, this is possible, this would be a discussion we can take offline and work out.
Thank you, Mr Keach. Through, through you, Chair. I, I'm happy to maybe, um, exchange a few ideas and then, and get your opinions on immediately forward, just to have that oversight and clarity. Great. Thank you.
We can, we can update you on those as we go forward, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Do we have any further questions, sir? No? Thank you, Mr Keach. And that was, um, good clarity in, in terms of the, um, reconciliation process.
Quite a confusing area, but a highly important area. Thank you.
You've summarised it very well. Thank you, sir. Committee, uh, the recommendation is that the Queensland Audit Office twenty twenty two interim audit report as detailed in attachment one be received and the contents noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you, Mayor Harding, the secondaire. Thank you councillor Doyle. I'll open the matter for discussion.
Uh, thank you, Chair. As we just discussed, I think there's a great opportunity there, um, to share the information more widely amongst this group of elected reps, what that looks like and what form it takes. Um, happy to, um, progress those discussions. Um, and, and it may just be compiling a list of questions, um, and, 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 um, having them answered, um, potentially.
Yes, I, I believe that's a, uh, a great suggestion by yourself councillor Doyle. Thank you.
Okay, I'm happy to work with councillor Johnic to progress what that might look like.
Yeah, happy for that as well through you, Chair, and, and, yeah, sit with you and maybe work out some regular maybe check-ins of that. And then there's a comfort level there and, and, um, thank you for being, both of you for being on that audit and risk committee as well, because I know that's a lot of work.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Through you, Chair. Uh, I'd certainly be interested in those discussions as well. And, um, sharing information as well without giving you the whole of the burden of the audit in this committee, if that makes sense. Because it's quite, it's quite a thing.
And thinking, sorry, Chair, thinking about the terms of reference for the audit and risk committee, I think there is an opportunity. So not even, you know, questions and, and written reports. It might be a better solution. The opportunity for councillors, um, to participate. Um, similar to what I do with the retail subcommittee. I am not a member of that committee, but, um, I, I can observe, so. That way councillor Johnic gets to ask the very difficult technical questions that she understands and knows about that some of us.
Well, I must say, I personally, um, appreciate, uh, the level of, um, professional qualification and experience amongst the members, uh, the elected members, uh, uh, of council to, uh, assist us as a collective, as a group to, uh, distill and understand, kind of, um, working understanding of these matters and processes. Uh, so I'd like to personally express that. Thank you. Mayor Harding?
Yes, thank you. And, um, I just, um, want to thank the, the audit and risk management committee and, and also the CEO. Um, all the papers are available to all councillors on the LG hub. Um, and so it's great to dive into those, um, topics as well. And I do encourage anyone. I, I know when there's certain topics on the agenda that are of interest to myself, I ask to be an observer. And that's always been really, really good as well. Um, but for this, um, um, report itself, the QAO report, I just want to note, CEO, um, the fact that, um, each year this improves. Um, the first year we came in here, a lot of red. Um, and before you were the general manager of corporate services, so they were under your, uh, command then. Um, to see this report continue to improve, I want to thank you and the organisation for your dedication and professionalism. Um, and, and just noting things like, um, last year at the LGAQ conference, you know, our council was awarded, uh, the LGMS, you know, award for enterprise risk management. So it's, it's, it's really great to see that, that culture change and then the improvements. So thank you very much, CEO.
Thank you. Through the chair, just, um, thank you very much. There is still much work to do, but thank you. We are working very hard to make the improvements and all credit to the team for their continued focus and, and effort working within the constraints of the current, uh, systems and solution that we have. And, uh, as you're aware, the I evolve project is a strategic project of critical importance. The regular reporting on that will continue, as will the effective asset management project, which is another critical strategic project for the organisation. And we'll continue to provide regular reports on that throughout this financial year and no doubt beyond.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, any further discussion? No? Then I'll, uh, put the motion. Uh, those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Uh, we, I don't have any, uh, notices of motion that I've received. There are no matters arising, that I understand. And, uh, are there any procedural motions in formal matters? No? Then I declare the, uh, meeting closed at ten twenty one. And uh, I would suggest that we have break for morning tea for twenty minutes? Then we'll make it easy for the next committee, um, start time. Uh, we'll make it, uh, come back at eleven. And so I'll, uh, move that. Uh, do I have a secondaire? Uh, thank you councillor Johnny. All those in favour? Oh, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. See you, everyone. Back at eleven.